More people in there.
Right?
Yeah.
All right, it is six o'clock, Monday, March third. And we'll call our meeting to order and start off with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next we'll have the roll call.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Collister? Coleman? Alinger? Bennett?
Yes.
All right, uh, we have approval of tonight's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion here? Take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett? Yes. Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, next is public participation. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to get up and address the council? Anybody on Zoom? If not, we'll move on. Do we have any, no presentations tonight? Uh, next is a public hearing. And item A is a public hearing regarding the development agreement between Mr. Equities LLC and the city.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And tonight's meeting is a little bit larger, it's quite a bit on it. Uh, the first item here for a public hearing is for Mr. Equities LLC, that's seven oh three South Main Street. Uh, it's the building just north of Dairy Queen. It's got the accounting service facility in it, the monument shop, uh, used to be a dilapidated property. This is what TIF is essentially for, to turn blight into valuable property, which is what's happened here. Went from eighty-six thousand assessed to four hundred and fifty. Finance and Personnel Committee and Jackson County Economic Alliance worked, um, a development agreement that was after the fact. And that considered, um, thought fifty percent was a fair ask and we can do that, uh, for ten years. And so this still gives the other taxing bodies a heck of a bump in the value increase from that property investment. And improves the corridor down south quite a bit. So that's really kind of the meat of the tax rebate agreement that's before you tonight is, um, allowing for public input into that process, which we follow up in resolution later in this agenda. Do you have any questions on that?
Nope. Um, did anybody, uh, have anything they want to say?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion by Simonsen, seconded by Lyon to close the public hearing. Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Uh, let's see, item B is a public hearing regarding a development agreement with First Land LLC.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, this one isn't as straightforward. Obviously, the Hearst Hotel had a series of problems the prior year where twenty-two apartments, uh, were vacated. And a lot of those folks didn't want to leave. Uh, the state is pretty well hooked in to the property on a senior housing contract. And they contacted First Land LLC, uh, and the prior developer, Chris Ailes, uh, and requested them become re-involved with the property. And so, uh, the ownership before First Land LLC received a two-hundred-thousand-dollar cash loan from the city, um, in two thousand and five. This is not what we're doing this time, to be clear. And this is why you do TIF rebates. Someone pays their taxes, they get a certain amount coming back to them. It's not cash leaving the city's general fund like you may have experienced in the past. It's the same thing at the Meadow Park subdivision. It's the best way for the city to do their TIF business. Uh, so the complexity of this development agreement is that there's quite a bit of money that's still owed on that two-hundred-thousand-dollar loan from two thousand and five, eighty-one thousand dollars. Ownership before just said a couple of years ago, they're not going to pay it. They defaulted on their agreement, lawyers became involved. Next thing, oh, they're trying to give it away for a dollar and you know the rest is history here. So this is where we stand now on trying to fixing the problem. So, uh, in many ways, um, the state has a large, uh, piece in this that they want to see succeed. And if it didn't, it would go to a public auction and someone may or may not have bought it there. So I think at this point, the city, our staff, council, I think we're happy that it is being refilled. Um, and at this point, the way that we're proposing a development agreement to you is close to an eighty percent rebate, not a fifty like the one before, but eighty. The rebate that's calculated into this is fifty-nine-hundred for ten years on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar minimum assessment agreement. Right now, without that minimum assessment agreement, it's valued at a hundred and ninety-two thousand. If, for example, this developer takes the property for a dollar, they get state tax credit to help redevelop the property. They have this tax benefit behind them too. Say it's filled and it cash flows in a couple of years. And then they try to resell the property for a gain. That's when we recollect our eighty-one thousand dollars is off that closing. That's the way this development agreement's built up. Uh, to me, it's the only way that you're going to be able to collect that eighty-one back in a reasonable way. So, um, the max value that can come out of this is fifty-nine thousand dollars over ten years. Otherwise, this agreement's locked pretty tight and probably your most risk-free rebate agreement that you're going to get out of the Hearst Hotel. Any conversation or questions on it I can happily answer?
We did? Do we have a motion?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, we have a motion by Bennett to close the public hearing?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Would take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our consent agenda. Item A is minutes from the February seventeenth regular city council meeting. Bills payable through March third, twenty twenty-five in the amount of four hundred and three thousand, forty-nine dollars and fifty-seven cents. The February financial reports and a new Class C alcohol license filed by Moore Family Cheese.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Do we have any discussion? Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
We have no old business, so we move into new business. Item A is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Macocana and Mr. Equities LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item B is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of a development agreement by and between the city of Macocana and First Land LLC.
So moved.
Motion by Bennett?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item C is a resolution approving downtown incentives, acquisition assistance, consult assistance, facade and upper story renovation grant award to First Land LLC in the total amount of fifteen thousand dollars, contingent on proof of payment and completion of work.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Downtown Incentives Committee met last week to review an application, again related to the Hearst Hotel. Uh, but this one would be a reimbursement check to the First Land LLC for a lot of the work that's currently being done inside. Brad's been pretty active with that foreman and that crew. They just did a roof and did it well. And there's a lot of drywall and flooring work that's going into that that qualifies for that upper story housing renovation. So, uh, we talked, uh, with some pretty good length at the Downtown Incentives Committee about the development agreement and this. And we have at least three examples that mix financing sources pretty well. And the committee felt okay that this can be recommended for action tonight.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item D is a resolution setting a public hearing for March seventeenth, two thousand and five, at six P M. For a matter of East Maple Drainage Project, public, or plans and specifications.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, we're setting ourselves up for quite a few real estate transactions or they to East Maple Street and the drainage plan that's going to be improved out that way. The first step in hosting a bidding is putting together some plan specifications and having a public hearing for those. Andy Gottgen from Origin Designs here tonight for that and some other things. So, uh, if we have more questions about that particular project, we can talk about it on the next item. But this resolution strictly for setting a public hearing. After the public hearing, following day, we'll release it for competitive bidding.
Here we got a motion by Bennett, seconded by Rickrell. Do we have any discussion on this? Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item D is a resolution awarding an engineering contract to Origin Design in the amount of fifty-six thousand dollars for the East Maple Drainage Project Services.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I'll invite Andy to the podium here in a second. We've been paying the engineering services for this particular problem on discussion of motions up until now, city manager authority beforehand. But as Origin and management's been looking at this, this contract, which isn't a big Origin contract in the grand scheme of things, but still it's a fair ask of Origin to really get involved in a deeper contract. So we're halfway paid and up to thirty-two thousand of billables with Origin at this point. As far as what's left in it, it's plant production, it's the bidding, which, you know, you have your excavator questions and hey, can you tell me about what we're going to do with this dirt here? And how, how is this piping matchup? They're, they're needed for these things. So whether it's by contract and continuing to pay them or without them, I think that we're pretty far in. And it's the right move to pass along and consider tonight. Additional services that go into this fifty-six thousand include construction staking so that when the project is getting started and when it's being finished, that we have the staking out there in place for the basin so everyone has it for future reference. So, uh, it's not just something that I want to see the city put out for bid and then Origin's just done. I think that you want to, still want to have engineer coverage with this water management plan along the way. Andy, you want to jump up to the podium?
I think Josh covered it pretty well, but, um, yeah, if there's any questions, I'm happy to take those. We've got design pretty much ninety-five, ninety-nine percent of the way there. It's just finishing the plans up, um, soliciting bids, evaluating those bids once they come in, um, helping the city through a war to that contract and then staking, construction staking.
Okay. Okay, I guess we have no questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we, uh?
So moved.
Okay, motion by Bennett?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item E is a resolution setting a public hearing for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. On the proposed sale of real estate generally described as a portion of parcel one-four-six, one-eight, one-nine, four-zero, one-zero-two, one-zero-zero, better known as one thousand fifteen East Platt Street, approximately seven thou, seventy thousand, seventy-two square feet in size to T and M Investments LLC for the total sum of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and eighty-five dollars and seventy-one cents.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, for this one and the next two, uh, public hearings are required for any real estate transaction. That's why these are, um, on here as setting public hearings. And they're each related to the East Maple Drainage Project that we'll be going through here shortly. So, uh, the dollar amount on a per acre basis matches what the council paid for it in, in twenty nineteen as requested. So they were in agreement with the owners.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, got a motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Then take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item F is a resolution setting a public hearing for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. On the proposed sale of real estate generally described as a parcel of a bunch of numbers ending in twenty-three hundred, AKA ten fifteen East Platt Street, uh, approximately one hundred sixty-six thousand, two hundred seventy-two square feet to Verla Arbeck in the amount, uh, no greater than one dollar.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Bennett, seconded by Lyon. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Nope, it's just, this reads, just this item and the next read pretty much as a land exchange. That's why it's a dollar each and they're very close in size.
Okay. Go ahead and take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
All right, that one passes. Item G is a resolution setting a public hearing date for March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six P M. On the proposed purchase of real estate generally described as a portion of parcel ending in two-nine-zero-zero, approximately one hundred forty thousand, four hundred forty square feet in size in the amount of one dollar.
So moved.
Motion by Rickrell?
Second.
Seconded by Bennett. Do we have any discussion here? Then take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item H is a resolution declaring surplus of city property and authorizing the resale.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, every so often, we put together a surplus list for your consideration to dispose of property that's no longer needed. Uh, perhaps even this week or the week thereafter, we'll be receiving our new fire department pumper after twenty-four, thirty months of waiting. So we had to be thinking about what to do with it and what associated equipment and where it goes. So we'd like to start that process and start fishing for, for offers. All but the last item are related to that. And the last item to me is pretty fascinating. It's a D three forty-eight generator. It's about six hundred kilowatts of power. It's about half the size of my office. It's from nineteen eighty. It's pretty neat. So we expect maybe it'd be seven or fifteen thou, seven to fifteen thousand in value. It just depends on what we might be able to do with it. So it's a lot to move and a lot to logistically take care of. But these are the items that we covered with our department heads and there's nothing else that stands out to us now since we're doing it in here.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We got a motion by Simonsen, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion here? Then go ahead and take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item I is a resolution awarding abatement mowing bid to Mow and Grow.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a typical item. Each spring, we bid out mowing abatement services, which is your typical, uh, grass code violation that would be sent over for, for mowing. It's not exactly easy work and it's not exactly easy work on the mower blades themselves, which is why you might be looking at sixty dollars an hour on this. But that was the best of the two offers and it's a pretty good price.
So moved.
Motion by Lyon, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion? Go ahead and take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
That one passes. Item J is a resolution awarding the mowing bids.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, every three years, we bid city property mowing that's not abatement related. Uh, it's twenty twenty-two since the last time we done this, so I've been anxiously looking forward to it. We have some really good prices for you here. And, and John learned a lot about hosting individual meetings with mowers. So he took a lot of calls over the last month, month and a half to get to this point. And Chris Eric and Mow and Grow and Rad put in some, some pretty good offers for services here. I believe it's even below our twenty twenty-two budget as far as I recall. So we feel pretty good about what's in front of you tonight. And there were, the chart was so big, I did not include it because it was too much to look at. But we basically had circle, which was the best deal out of them. And there was one person that was terminated, uh, by the city prior and we disqualified that bid. But otherwise, we feel pretty good about where we're at with these tonight.
Okay.
So moved.
We got a motion by Bennett? Seconded by La, Lyon? Seconded by Lyon? Any discussion on this item? Go ahead and take the roll.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Okay, that one passes. Item K is a resolution awarding the farm rent bids.
Thank you, Mayor. And Greg Boakes from Onward Farm Management helped us out with this package. Uh, several bids returned for each of our city properties. Last year, we were terminated, not on our doing, but our, our renters did and it had a lot to do with crop price volatility. So we had to rebid it and do this work. Adam Rice and Anthony Rice are the winning bids in this and, uh, we recommend their approval tonight.
Okay. Motion by Simonsen, seconded by Rickrell. Any discussion here? Take the roll.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
That one passes. Item I is a resolution awarding Globic Community Park Construction Bid to Streets Construction in the amount of eight hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mayor. And I assume there's quite a few people here interested in this tonight. So if you want to encourage participation, you're certainly welcome to do so. Uh, the bids that were put out, um, through Stickley Morton Architects called for about a one-point-one-one engineer's estimate. And what you have tonight here is a pretty good price for what's being offered and they're local. And so with the design cost, some material cost, the sensory play park, uh, the trees, the benches, the, I mean, the all-inclusive costs still heading into it, believe it or not, is sitting at about one-point-four million. Uh, so I don't want the community or for you to be fooled that, well, it's eight hundred and fifteen thousand. There's, there's so much more that has to happen that goes into it. Public Works Crew's still planning on helping out quite a bit. But we had eight bidders in this ranging from eight hundred and fifteen thousand to about one-point-one million, average being nine hundred and nine thousand. And having worked with mark sheets before on projects like this and of this scale, it's a really seamless experience. And I can tell you from staff's perspective, I'm really happy to present this to you tonight because he's going to do a phenomenal job. And I think he made some positive comments about being involved with Good Now Field and doesn't seem to think that this would be any other potential problem. And, um, we look forward to starting up with him. So Mayor, Council, if you have anything more to add to this, I will turn it back over to you. But if, if people want to talk about it, up to you.
Anybody in the audience want to address this issue?
I think it's a cra, just crazy exciting to see that actually on the agenda and moving forward right now.
Yeah.
It's very exciting.
Very, very exciting.
I think it'll be great when it's done.
Yeah, as part of Macocana Betterment, we've been involved with this for years. And to see it come to fruition, to see people like Nancy and Chuck that went out there and, and raised these funds, a lot of hard work. And, uh, I think the, the design is exceptional, so, so moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Lyon, seconded by Bennett. There's no discussion, take the roll.
Rickrell?
Yes.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Item M is a resolution awarding South Main and Summit Intersection Project to Midwest Concrete in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand, six-hundred-seventy-six dollars and forty-one cents.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. And I assume there's a whole camp of people that are going to be just excited about this public improvement as the previous one. So, uh, there were five bidders in IDOT's bidding system for this project, again with bids ranging quite significantly. But I can't tell you how far, but the winner was Midwest Concrete for two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. Uh, what that is, is a full concrete reconstruction of the intersection, including retaining walls, rounding of the curbs, increases the intersection space by about ten percent and relocates utilities. Bowman Oil Sign, for example, it's in city right away there. It's going to have to be moved. Uh, we've been in communication with him, so there's a lot of, uh, safety improvements that are going to happen there. And surprisingly, uh, this cost is below the grant by itself. So this ended up being way less expensive than everyone had initially thought on this project. So we don't have to use any ECIA funds specifically earmarked, earmarked for this. So, uh, another good offer.
We'll wait for the change orders.
Yeah.
So moved.
All right, motion by Lyon?
Second.
Seconded by Rickrell? If there's no discussion, take the roll.
Lyon?
Yes.
Bennett?
Yes.
Simonsen?
Yes.
Rickrell?
Yes.
All right, that passes. Item N is a resolution approving the Platt Street Project Change Order number sixteen in the amount of twenty-one thousand, eighty-nine dollars and sixty-eight cents, submitted by Chick Fry Excavation for the Platt Street Project.
It is real. This is a change order. It's number sixteen. The IDOT walkthrough, Andy, was a year and a half ago, right? You know, so the last punch list item are two stormwater grates out there on West Platt Street that are non-ADA compliant, design-related, where if you can picture a motorized cart of sorts, the wheels falling in between the grate holes. So it was called out and those have to be ripped out. The concrete has to be ripped out, has to be made flush. There's intersection spacing that's required to make this work proceed. And that amounts to twenty-one thousand dollars. Don't hurt the messenger here, but, uh, IDOT's saying you got to do this. And we have the funds to do it in the Platt Street Fund. And we had to enter into a very, very minor separate origin agreement to get all this done because of all the finger pointing that you can imagine's happened in the background. So, um, separately, that situation's progressing, but this is what stands in your way to totally finish this project out. And maybe once and for all have a project completion certificate. And I don't mean to be smug in my look here, but I can't believe I'm presenting this.
I'm going to quote you on that. Sixteen change orders, what's the dollar amount total now?
It's short of a million still.
But technically, we're over budget then, right? Your comment was that we were under budget, we had funding, but we're a million dollars over the.
Yeah, the, the city borrowed a very large amount of money upfront to bond out to get this project right. So when the dust settles on this entire project, when Chick Fry submits their pay apps correctly to Origin, I figure we'll still end up about fifty or seventy-five thousand dollars left in the Platt Street Fund. That's a number I've been very close with heading into these problems and knowing what's going to happen. So, um, I don't know which bond series it was back in twenty nineteen or twenty twenty, but the number was really chosen. Um, and it was chosen high intentionally. And I also can't believe we're sitting here talking about sixteen. The only comment I would make that maybe is a counter to that is just how far below Chick Fry's bid was than the other four competitors on the project. And that's no one's fault but theirs. And I think you guys have had to deal with the problem of them correcting mistakes along the way. And now you're on your sixteenth version of, hey, but this needed fixed too. There's a lot of expectation management problems with that.
They should have all been very clear and straightforward and that you can walk by and see that they're not ADA compliant.
Yeah.
But added in for another change order is just, it's ridiculous.
Yeah. You know, I, my finest example and probably the most easy one to look at for the public is just the light pole based skirts. From a design perspective, why, why was that the part chosen? As soon as you get them out of the box, ah, there must be another piece coming because it looks that awful. And, and, and somewhere along the way, the design was just awful and we've used that excuse a lot here. And it was. And I think that that's probably being highly considered in what we're dealing with on the back end of this. But this is just another item that is in the territory of you got to do it. It's one of those running tally things that we're dealing with as staff and Origin's dealing with as well with the contractors that will get settled out soon. And if it doesn't get settled out, well, then I think there's going to be some reputational damages on contractor's part at a later time.
Yeah, it just, it, it gives the city a black eye with sixteen change orders. It's kind of a joke, honestly. I mean, it's, I'm not pointing the blame at Andy, I'm not pointing the blame at, but the entire project itself adds that flavor.
When do they plan to start, do you know? If they get.
Uh, they plan to start on this work that's covered by the change order on Wednesday. The weather looks pretty iffy for Wednesday, Thursday probably at the latest.
How long do you think it'll take them?
Two, three days. Uh, with that in mind, since you did ask, if they do start Thursday, it's likely the traffic control will be up in that intersection until Monday morning, very early Monday morning. Just that you have to have, uh, concrete cure time there. So, and we want to protect that new intake that's pulled, so.
Okay.
Um, and I do want to mention one thing since the question was brought up. And I don't want to be misleading here, there will be one more change order likely on this project. Um, and this is.
There always is.
I just want to, you know, I don't want to sit down and not say anything and, and be misleading.
That's for materials reconciliation.
Well, it's, it's a reconciliation, that's right.[1728.98]